Good afternoon and welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting.
Good afternoon, welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting of May 13th, 2024. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the rear of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The Order of Business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify himself or herself, including an address, and the name of any organization represented by such person, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of each month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call our first item of business?
Our first item of business is a reminder that due to the Memorial Day holiday, we will not have a city council meeting on Monday, May 27th, 2024. And next would be our election of Chair and Vice Chair.
I have an entertain nomination.
Mr. Chair, it's my pleasure to bring forth the nomination of Sandra Washington as Council Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Weber. Any other nominations? All right, scene one. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
We clap now or clap later? Later. Okay. All right, it is now time. Madam Chair asks for the next item of business, please.
Our next item of business would be our election of Vice Chair.
I would nominate, Madam Chair, I would nominate Justin Carlson as Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Weber? All right, call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We now have a new Chair and a new Vice Chair. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, let's move forward.
Next on our agenda would be our Lincoln Police Department Community Member Awards.
Clap now?
I feel like we should. Good afternoon and congratulations, new Chair.
Thank you very much.
Sandra Washington.
Thank you.
Again, Mashawn Morrow, I'm the Chief of Police, Lincoln Police Department. Good afternoon again. I would like to start the program by welcoming our community members along with their family and friends for being with us today to be recognized for your valiant efforts in serving our community alongside us, and also for our council members for providing us this incredible venue to be able to lift up their service to the community and recognize them here today. With us, we also have lots of, I finally get to turn around here, lots of representation from the Lincoln Police Department, and specifically for today, we have Captain Jake Dilsever, our Awards Committee Chair, and Roy Rivera, who is assisting, he's the Secretary of our Awards Committee. It is an honor to have each and every one of you here, as we recognize those, again, who have gone above and beyond in service to our community, to have a positive impact to our community. We know as the Lincoln Police Department, serving under a community-based policing model, that it is the partnerships working collaboratively with our community members and organizations that allow us to identify issues and find successes in the community, and we want to recognize that effort, and also acknowledge that we can't effectively deal with all of the issues in our community alone, and that we need these partnerships, and our community having a willingness of mutual responsibility. And so today, we're really bringing those forward and recognizing displays of valiant, selfless, and heroic actions while assisting members of the Lincoln Police Department on calls for service, which have contributed towards positive outcomes for those that were involved. I would like to bring forward Captain Jake Dilsever, who will walk through with us all of the awards that we're sharing today.
Thank you, Chief. I am Jake Dilsever, a captain with the Lincoln Police Department. We've got a couple that may or may not be able to join us today, but if everybody is able to join us as planned, we've got three different awards that we're going to issue or present today. The first being the Certificate of Merit. The Awards Committee may bestow a certificate upon a community member or organization whose actions might merit recognition by the Police Department. Another award that you might hear today is a Community Life Saving Award. That's awarded for saving a human life or for valiant lifesaving efforts even though the victim may perish. The other award you may hear today is a Community Meritorious Conduct Award. That's awarded to a community member who voluntarily places themselves in danger while coming to the aid of an officer or another community member, or for deeds of courage at risk of personal safety. Now for the presentation of the awards. Again, I'm not positive that everybody is here. Is Elaine Smith, Marie Elaine Smith, was she able to make it? The next recipient is Tony Bessesi. Lincoln Police Officers were dispatched to a downtown Lincoln parking garage regarding a female who was possibly suicidal and intending to jump off the parking garage. Tony Bessesi was in the parking garage and ran up to check on the female and began engaging her in conversation. Mr. Bessesi spoke with the emotionally distraught female for a few minutes, asking her to step away from the ledge until officers arrived. Officers continued speaking with the female, and she eventually went with the officers to seek professional assistance. Mr. Bessesi's proactive decision to engage and assist certainly contributed to the positive outcome. Anthony Bessesi has earned the Certificate of Merit. Now that we've had one recipient, we've identified that I got off track, I want to announce that we'll briefly, during the presentation of the award happens, if you have family or friends who want to take a quick photograph from in here, that's great, and otherwise there will be an opportunity for more photographs and celebration out in the lobby after the conclusion of the ceremony. Next to receive an award is Mary Linglebach and Ruth Cupfer. Mary Linglebach is a retired Lincoln Police Officer, and she has periodic interaction with current LPD personnel. LPD personnel knew Ms. Linglebach, and her wife Ruth Cupfer frequently walked in an area where an elusive fugitive was thought to possibly be living on the street or camping in the area. The fugitive had an outstanding arrest warrant for first-degree sexual assault of a child and had eluded capture previously. A few days after the request for vigilance, Ms. Linglebach called LPD, having spotted the fugitive sitting on a park bench. Law enforcement personnel responded, and the fugitive was taken into custody without incident. Without the diligence and wherewithal of Ms. Linglebach and Cupfer, the fugitive would have likely continued to elude capture and pose a threat to the community. Mary Linglebach and Beth Cupfer have earned the Certificate of Merit. Lenara Carlson? Was Lenara able to join? The next recipient is Brooklyn Kinshue and Emily Schneider. A driver lost control and his vehicle rolled several times. The driver was ejected from the vehicle and thrown some distance from the wreckage. Brooklyn Kinshue and Emily Schneider were among several witnesses who stopped to help. Both women immediately assessed the driver's medical needs, and he was found to not have a pulse. They began performing CPR on the driver until paramedics arrived. LFR paramedics verified the driver had no pulse, and it was suspected he may perish from his injuries. The driver was transported to the hospital for further medical treatment. It was subsequently discovered that if not for the immediate actions of Ms. Kinshue and Ms. Schneider, the driver would have very likely not survived, or suffered irreversible brain damage due to the lack of oxygen to his brain. Instead, the driver survived and was eventually released from the hospital. His family expressed their immense gratitude for the efforts that saved the life of their loved one. Brooklyn Kinshue and Emily Schneider have earned the Community Lifesaving Award. Ashley Anderson? At a downtown Lincoln museum, a male visitor collapsed and fell to the floor. Without hesitation, Ms. Anderson began performing CPR upon the man until paramedics arrived. As LFR continued the lifesaving measures, the man became responsive, and by the time he was transported to the hospital, the man was verbally interactive with medical staff. The doctor would later describe the incident as a cardiac episode, and noted the male may very well not have survived if not for the swift actions of Ms. Anderson. Ashley Anderson has earned the Community Lifesaving Award. Pedro Arroyo Varela? At a South Lincoln restaurant, an officer was off-duty having lunch, and there was a commotion in another part of the restaurant. The officer went over to find Pedro Arroyo Varela performing abdominal thrusts upon a male patron who was choking. After multiple Heimlich thrusts for an extended period, the male began to breathe again. The male subsequently declined medical assistance and believed he had recovered. Mr. Varela's swift and decisive actions saved that gentleman's life. Pedro Arroyo Varela has earned the Community Lifesaving Award. Robert Fitch and Gary Kunal. I don't think Robert was able to join us today, so we have Gary Kunal. I'll share the story of both of their actions. At a local Lincoln gym, Robert Fitch was enjoying the facility with his family. At some point, Mr. Fitch noticed a man floating face down in the pool. Mr. Fitch assessed for a few moments, due to the commonality of people floating in that manner. After some period, however, Mr. Fitch summoned Gary Kunal, who was swimming laps nearby, to check on the man. Mr. Kunal found the man was, in fact, unresponsive. Mr. Fitch jumped in the pool, and they both pulled the man from the pool. Mr. Fitch called 911, and they collaborated on lifesaving efforts. Mr. Kunal providing rescue breaths, and Mr. Fitch providing chest compressions. LFR paramedics eventually arrived to take over lifesaving measures, including several AED shocks of the man's heart. The man was eventually transported to the hospital where he regained a pulse and was stabilized. If not for the swift and valiant actions of these two men, the victim's fate would have very likely been very different. Robert Fitch and Gary Kunal have earned the Community Lifesaving Award. We have one remaining award. I don't, was Brian Sims able to join us? I don't think Mr. Sims was able to join. Again, I want to mention the appreciation that we have for the partnership with our community members, and to the Chief's point, that the community requires the entire team approach, and we thank you for these recognitions.
I realize our thanks will be a little bit redundant, but on behalf of the entire council, I'd like to extend our sincere thanks to the core of folks at the Lincoln Police Department who put the ceremony together, and to the nominators who took the time to celebrate these individuals for their acts of heroism and commitment, and to repeat our thanks and our gratitude to each of the award winners for stepping up when was needed. Each of you epitomize the best characteristics of a model citizen or resident: kindness, compassion, and empathy for others. You acted instinctively, quickly, and selflessly to aid another when the need was great. All of us who call Lincoln home applaud you.
Just in closing for the ceremony, I want to thank the opportunity from the City Council to have this presentation today. Also, thank you to the family members and friends who've joined us today. Certainly a thank you to the Lincoln Police Personnel who've submitted nominations for these awards, and a reminder that we have the opportunity for photographs out in the lobby area immediately preceding this ceremony. Thank you.
We'll give everyone just a moment to rearrange.
Thank you.
I really wanted to know what the meritorious service award is for. Madam Clerk, I think we are ready to proceed.
Okay. Next on our agenda would be our Consent Agenda, Sections 1, Sections 2, and Sections 3.
Would anyone like to step forward and present on any of the items on the Consent Agenda? Is anyone here to present on any of the items on the Consent Agenda? All right. Madam Clerk, let's proceed.
We can call the vote on these. Item 1A is reappointing Becky Hannah to the Lincoln Housing Authority Board for a term to expire July 1st, 2029, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckius. Any comments? All right, let's call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 1B is reappointing Ryan Dale to the City Personnel Board for a term to expire June 22nd, 2029, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any comments? Seeing none, Madam, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 1C is reappointing Mike Donlin and Douglas Emery to the Charter Revision Commission for terms to expire July 15th, 2028, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any comments? All right, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 1D is resolution levying the special taxes assessed for the cost of the improvements in the College View Business Improvement District, Havlock Street Maintenance Business Improvement District, North 27th Street Maintenance Business Improvement District, South Street Maintenance Business Improvement District, University Place Maintenance Business Improvement District, and West O Street Maintenance Business Improvement District, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? All right, let's call the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes our Consent Agenda. We shall move on to Section 3. Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll call Item 3A and 3B together. Item 3A and B, Application of O Street Hotel Associates LLC, doing business as True by Hilton for a Class C liquor license located at 305 North 50th Street, and the related manager application of Amanda M. Cadina.
Welcome, Ms. Cadina.
Hi.
Hi. Would you tell us a little bit about your application?
Yes, we are just looking to get a, I think it's a on- and off-sale liquor license just for beer, wine, and seltzers, all closed containers, no pours, no bottles, for our hotel and our gift shop.
Okay, all right. We have a letter here from Investigator Parker with Liquor &amp; Keno, he's a Liquor &amp; Keno investigator, and it's recommending denial.
Yes, we are not, unfortunately, a hundred feet away from the daycare that is just right close by, so we are aware, we will be working with planning and zoning and being a part of that process, to hopefully get some new language put into that so we can be approved.
If you don't mind staying there for just one moment. Investigator Parker, would you like to add anything to this?
Investigator Scott Parker, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street. No, she summed it up great. Planning was looking to rewrite H2 zoning and asked them to contribute to that. They're well aware that it's not necessarily a for-sure thing because it has to go through planning and City Council and everything like that. We discussed with corporate, or I discussed with corporate, to contact the Liquor Commission to have their license set aside in lieu of this, in the hopes that they can reapply if the language is approved.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I think I'm going to ask Planning Director Carey to come forward and give us an idea of timeframe and sort of scope of the zoning proposal. Director Carey.
Good afternoon, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. So what I can, what has been stated is all accurate. We are working on some unrelated updates and changes to the H zoning district part of the zoning code. This issue came up, obviously, more recently, so at this point, the recommendation is denial for this current license because it does not meet the spacing. So we are giving some consideration to how might this other change, a more broad change to the H zoning districts potentially incorporate this, but there certainly is no guarantee, we haven't made that final decision yet, but it's something that we're aware of, and we will consider it as we talk, as we work through that.
Okay, and you'll involve this applicant in the discussion about changes pertaining to this issue?
Yes, I think it'd be important to have that input so that the situation is part of the discussion.
All right, thank you very much. Do any other counselors have questions?
Director Carey, this came up before on other types of businesses as well. What is the, how many feet do they have to be apart, that sort of thing?
So in this case, we have, in most cases, unless there's a restaurant involved, there is a 100-foot spacing, and so I would say the vast majority of situations can be accommodated. We have had over the years, every once in a while, we have a situation where it is challenging, we can't, the zoning and the use that is occurring, such as a daycare, they just can't meet that requirement, so we have to recommend denial.
Same thing kind of came up with the grocery store at 52nd and 53rd.
Correct. Some different circumstances there with what was there before and what's going.
There was liquor there before.
Yeah, but, so yeah, there's some challenges with that. We try to make sure we're being very consistent with our rules so that we're not approving some and not others, so.
Right.
We'll take a look at this as an opportunity to maybe tweak it, and we would certainly come back to you with some recommendation.
Okay, yeah.
Do you have any forecast for how long it might be before we see this?
I don't have, we don't have a specific date yet. We don't, it's not going to Planning Commission as of right now. We have been working on it, so it's something that's been coming, so it's, we're not just starting on it, so it's probably sometime over the summer.
Okay.
Is this a city ordinance?
Yes.
Any other comments or discussion from other members?
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the chambers wanting to speak on this item, either in support or opposition? All right, we'll move forward. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'll call Items 3C, D, and E together. Application of Kincaid Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Sideshow Spirits for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 235 feet by 220 feet at 1630 P Street on June 1st, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Application of Seven County Spirits LLC, doing business as Loop River Distilling for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 235 feet by 220 feet at 1630 P Street on June 1st, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And the application of Blending Distilling LLC, doing business as Blended Distilling for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 235 feet by 220 feet at 1630 P Street on June 1st, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
All right, is the applicant, or is one of the applicants here to speak on this item? Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in support or in opposition? All right, seeing none, let's move forward.
I'll call Items 3F and 3G together. Application of Global Warming Inc., doing business as The Mill for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 55 feet by 124 feet at 2021 Transformation Drive on May 25th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And the application of Site Development Lee 6 LLC, doing business as Scarlet Hotel for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 55 feet by 124 feet at 2021 Transformation Drive on May 25th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
All right, is anyone here to speak on this item? Is the applicant here to speak on this item? All right, is there anyone here who is? Is there anyone here who is here to speak in either support or in opposition to this item? Any questions or discussion? We'll move forward.
I'll call Items 3H, 3I, and 3J together. Application of Yin Falmy LLC, doing business as Hero 88, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 308 feet by 74 feet, at Canopy Street from R to Q Street, on May 25th, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Application of Yard Investments LLC, doing business as Gate 25, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 308 feet by 74 feet, at Canopy Street from R to Q Street, on May 25th, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the application of Bar at the Yard LLC, doing business as Longwells, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 308 feet by 74 feet, at Canopy Street from R to Q Street, on May 25th, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
All right. Is the applicant here to speak on this item? All right, not seeing the applicant. Are there any questions up here or discussion? Is anyone here to speak in support or in opposition to this item? I would just ask one question of either Investigator Parker or the clerk. Because this is the entertainment district, and I see that three of the four normal participants have put in applications, is there any idea if we're going to receive a fourth application sometime later?
Investigator Parker, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street. At this juncture, no.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, but I will certainly keep you in the loop. If there is, they're going to be cutting it very, very close if they, if it hasn't passed already in terms of timeframe. I believe it's a 17th for them to get that in. But if we do have something, I will certainly let you know, and we can go from there.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Madam Clerk, I believe we can move forward.
Item 3K is application of Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery, doing business as Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery, for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 20 feet, at the Haymarket Farmers Market, at 7th and P Street, on June 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th, July 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, August 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, 31st, and September 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th, and October 5th, and October 12th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on this application? Is there anyone here to speak in support or in opposition to this application? Are there any comments or questions from councilors? All right, then let's move forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to make two motions. My first motion will be a motion to deny Items 3A and 3B.
Second.
Second, Beckyus. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Madam Chair, with your privilege, I'd like to vote that, I'd like to motion that we approve Items 3C through 3K.
A second?
Second.
Second, Beckyus. Any discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Let's move on to public hearing resolutions. Madam Clerk.
Item 4A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for April 16th through April 30th, 2024.
Right. Is there anyone here to speak on any of the items on the pending claims against the city? Is anyone here to speak on any claim pending against the city? Seeing none, I would ask that we move on to the voting.
Item 4A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for April 16th through April 30th, 2024, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Let's move on to public hearing ordinance's second reading.
Item 5A is text amendment 24004, requesting the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.67.040, parking requirements, special conditions, to remove parking requirements for restaurants, social halls, and on-premises alcohol sales for the B2, B5 zoning districts as it is no longer required.
Good afternoon, Director Carey.
Good afternoon. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Here before you to provide you some information and an opportunity to do a cleanup item related to the text amendment that we asked you, and you did approve recently, which was to remove parking requirements for most, not all, of the commercial districts and commercial activities and industrial districts throughout the city. This was discovered that there was a specific part of the code for restaurant, social halls, and on-premise alcohol sales in the B2 and B5 districts specifically. We left that one section out of the action that was approved to basically remove parking requirements for all of those, those commercial districts. This was before the Planning Commission, April 24th. They did vote unanimously to approve this, to recommend approval to you. This really just cleans up, and the intent was that this would be included. It was inadvertently left out of that package, so this will get us back to where we intended to be in the first place. I will point out that, as you would see, the strikeouts do maintain the parking requirement for the B1 and B3 districts, which also was the intent of the package that was before you previously. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Do any councilors have questions for Mr. Carey? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in support or in opposition to this ordinance? Anyone here to speak in either support or opposition? Let's move forward.
I'll call Item 5B and 5C together. Item 5B and C, change of zone 24009, application of Nick Dwyer to change the zone from AGR Agricultural Residential District to R3 Residential District on the property generally located at South 70th and Pine Lake Road, and the related special permit 24011, application of Nick Dwyer to allow for a residential healthcare facility for up to 85 units with a waiver to maximum height on property generally located at South 70th Street and Pine Lake Road.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, 8535 Executive Woods Drive, Suite 200, here in Lincoln. Yeah, the applicant here, Nick Dwyer, is a member of the Dover Corporation. They're based out of St. Louis, and they do assisted living projects throughout the Midwest, and they've chosen Lincoln to make an investment, so this is at the, as Councilman Beckyus would call it, the hard corner of 70th and Pine Lake Road. And while there were attempts, I think, by many people to try to get some commercial zoning here, this assisted living came in and looked at it and liked the corner, and think it's one of the best things that could happen, and the planning does, you know, in terms of traffic. These assisted living facilities are very low-traffic generators, and as of now, their facility will take up most of the site. There's four 3-acre parcels there we're reconfiguring, and one of the families is going to stay there along Revere Road, but, so we've, we've agreed with the city on some of the infrastructure items we're required to do, and they're also participating with the 16-inch water main and 70th Street, so, yeah, so we laid contact really with one neighbor during the process, and wanted to know how far sewer and water was going to get, how close it was going to get to his property so he could develop his, so, as you might remember, this was the area that was annexed last year, and it maybe had some controversy, so this is one of the first steps in urbanizing it. So we have the change of zone and the use permit for the assisted living before you. Would like approval for both so that we can get going on construction later this summer.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All righty. Well, I see Director Carey in the back, and, all right. He's indicated not a need to come forward, so hearing no interest from my other councilors, thank you. This is the next step. All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in support or in opposition to this project? Items 5B, 5C, or 5D? Would anyone like to speak on this project? Seeing none, we can move forward.
I'll call Items 5D, E, and F together. Annexation 23008, application of Pacific Empire Developers, Inc., to annex approximately 37.75 acres, more or less, in the adjacent North 70th Street right-of-way on the property generally located at the northwest corner of North 70th Street and Arbor Road, and the related change of zone 23057, application of Pacific Empire Developers, to change the zone from AGR Agriculture District to I-1 Industrial District, totally approximately 34.24 acres, more or less, on the property generally located at the northwest corner of North 70th Street and Arbor Road, and the related conditional zoning and annexation agreement between the city and Pacific Empire Developers, Inc., for the property generally located at northwest corner of 70th and Arbor Road.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilman. Nate Burnett, Reg Engineering, 601 Old Chaney Road, Suite A. Before you this afternoon is preliminary plat and change of zone at the northwest corner of North 70th and Arbor Road. This was voted unanimously on Planning Commission. Rob with US Properties is here representing the client. There's adjacent I-1 zoning, so we're basically just requesting adjacent zoning that is adjacent to us, the industrial I-1. Been working through some comments with the city regarding the preliminary plat, but most of those have been worked out. At this point, there is already existing 16-inch water main on the north side of Arbor Road. There's sanitary sewer, so utilities are basically onsite, infrastructure's there, so with that, I'll open up for any questions.
Any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Wow, this is an easy day. All right, is there anyone, is there anyone else here who would like to testify on this item, either in support or in opposition? Anyone here'd like to testify in either support or opposition of this project? Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We can now move to Section 6, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 6A is amending Chapter 2.18 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the purchasing division by amending Sections 2.18.020 and 2.18.030 to raise the threshold for one-time purchases from $10,000 to $50,000, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckyus. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6B is approving the shops at Lincoln Redevelopment Agreement between the city and shops at Lincoln LLC relating to the redevelopment to property generally located at 6400 O Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckyus. Any comments, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers? Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6C is amending the fiscal year 2324 CIP to authorize and appropriate $7,534,974 in tax increment financing for the shops at Lincoln Redevelopment Project, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckyus. Any discussion? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in support or in opposition to this item? Oh, no, we're just voting. You're right, I'm so sorry, Ms. Kinsey, I forgot where we were. No discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6D is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the shops at Lincoln Redevelopment Project in amount not to exceed $7,534,974, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckyus. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6C is authorizing a 5 tenths of 1% occupation tax effective September 1st, 2024, on grocery receipts for the operation of a general business within the designated enhanced employment area to be used to pay for construction and operation of shops at Lincoln generally located at 6400 O Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckyus. Any discussion? Yes.
I would just like to state, I don't take usage of, or authorize, authorization of the occupation tax lightly. I'm voting for it in this manner because the occupation, excuse me, occupitation tax. Wow, today's rough.
Easy for some, rough for some.
That's right. It's only applying to the shops at Lincoln Redevelopment Agreement. It's not applying outside of that boundary, and because of the restriction on the boundary, I'll support the occupation tax, but I think that, generally speaking, we need to make sure that that tax is utilized wisely and very judiciously going forward. I cannot speak today. I give up. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor. You'll be fine. Any other discussion or comments? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes Section 6. Section 7 is resolutions first readings, or Items 7A through 7C. Section 8 is ordinance's first readings and related resolutions, Items 8A and 8D, or 8A through 8D, and Section 9 is our pending list, Items 9A through 9J.
Today is one of the meetings in the month where we have open public comment. The Chair Beckyus read this at the start of the meeting. I'll take the liberty to read this again. "Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at the open microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics." There will, there's a color-coded screen there while you're speaking. With plenty of time, it shows green. When you have one minute left, it turns to yellow, and red is the indication that you've run out of time. All right. Anyone wishing to speak during the open session, you are welcome to come forward.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. An article in the Lincoln Journal Star stated that South Haymarket Park is to get more green space. This is to be land that the Burlington Northern Railroad dumped oil and gas for 150 years. The city believes that they can replace dirt on that land and rid it of any toxic waste. However, there is a history in the United States of America of such land being declared safe, but years later is found to be causing skin irritation, lung dysfunction, and cancer in humans who lived, worked, and played in the areas. Spoiling the land. The toxic chemical in oil and gas is benzene, and the National Institutes of Health has found that it causes these health issues that I mentioned before. Here are two examples of this failure by government that led to harm to citizens. And that's just two of them. In Death Pagey, North New York, the Gromman Aerospace buried, in, company buried these chemicals and solvents and waste in drums under land which later became a park. This was an approval procedure. This was an approval procedure by the government. But when residents began to get cancer, the outcome to taxpayers was they had to pay millions of dollars in remuneration for disease and to peoples whose homeowner vis-, ownership lost value due to condemnation. Another example is in Hawaii. During World War II, the U.S. government stored fuel for the Pacific Fleet in 20 storage tanks located in a cave. Over the next 80 years, 15,000 gallons seeped of this, um, fuel seeped into the surrounding land where Red Hill Naval Base was located. Navy personnel and their families lived and worked there while this was occurring. Residents complained of the water having an oily taste, but the Navy said it was safe to drink. However, 10 years after much concern was raised, noticed by an environmental office in Honolulu, subsequently gave the government of Hawaii and the U.S., which had been forced to provide millions of taxpayer dollars in remuneration to citizens to clean up and also to owners of the land, besides disease that was caused to citizens who were unaware and who had been told by the government that it was safe. No one can guarantee the future. In light of these and other government mistakes, Watch Dogs says that we should move the park to cleaner, safer ground. Now, this came up once before in the building of the arena, and it was totally discounted by the leadership of the community at that time. We are hoping that the new leadership would be willing to consider that removing contaminated dirt and putting fresh dirt, where children will be playing and people will be enjoying and, uh, the surroundings and the activities in a park, would not allow this to go forth.
Thank you very much. Would the next speaker please come forward, if there is one?
Hi, Tulley, 10020 White Pike Road. Um, so I'm here again. On May 2nd, you guys have a major interfez, um, breakfast. Senator Washington, you were there, and Minnie Shob, you were there, right? It was a very nice song that day that say, "Love for all, love for all. Above the, beyond the borders, beyond the wall, we can all change the world together, love for all." I don't know who is all here, because it seemed like you don't consider the Palestinian or people who write in Lincoln trying to speak up for them as in this all when you say love for all. Getting tax money from business that manufacture bombs to kill kids is not a way to share love for all. You continuously tell us that is something that have to do with foreign policy, and you cannot do anything about it. Um, I'm going to shh, shh, give you some good news. So this right here is on April 24, 2024. Start to read it. Right here. Say, "The United States will not tolerate politicized attack by the ICC on our allies. Target Israel, and we will target you. If you move forward with the measure indicate in the report, we will move to end all American support for the ICC sanction your employees and associate and borrow you and your families from the United States. You have been warned." This letter right here, sending to Mr. Kareem Khan, the prosecutor of the ICC, the International Criminal Court. It is signed by Pick Rickett, Senator of Nebraska. What is the senators in Nebraska have to do with the prosecutor in the International Criminal Court trying to have an arrest foreign for Benjamin Netanyahu, an Israeli official? Right? So maybe if you really want to, you can do something that we've been asking you to do, and you keep, continues to say that it's something to do with foreign policy and you have nothing to do with it. We've been coming here for a long time, and we've been continuously show you the crime that Israel doing on Palestinian. They just, uh, add a list of it. It's indiscriminate attack over mosque, refugee camps, places of worship, UN facilities, Lebanon, that a country next to Israel and Palestine, also Palestine, humanitarian aid, flour masker, so where people desperately need just flour for their daily meal, they masker them. The warm central kitchen. They found mass grave around refugee camp around hospital. The list of places that been destroyed, some of them got damaged, but most of them got destroyed by the Israel. And mosques that you found, that's have a long-term standing. One of them are the, like, old church in the war. The year that they will be right here, they will destroy. Construction of cemeteries. Collective punishment over journalists, over healthcare worker, over kids, women, like everyone that was named Palestinian. They did not only target Muslim people, there's also others, Jewish and Christian.
Your time?
Yes. I have one more thing to say. We see many people with cane, with wheelchair, kids, people from different religions show up in protest and fighting for this. That's Bridger, that's only make like 13 sec, cent an hour, also donate money there. So you, with the power of every city council, you can do something. We've been able to have a very good conversation with the city attorney, yes. We want to have a conversation with you one-on-one, not just a monologue like this. Thank you.
Next, please. We have two microphones.
Luminous Anderson, City Attorney, I live at 2315 D Street. Here yet again, seeing y'all yet again. Should I, should I stand over here, though? Is this where it's more appropriate to stand? Will people see me better this way? No, I think I'll stand right here. Kind of can't stand how hypocritical you guys are. Number one, all politics is local, right? Like, you've seen a Nebraska senator threaten the ICC. Seems a little bit out of his range, but y'all can't seem to see the foreign policy that's sitting in your backyard on 27th and Superior. It's called General Dynamics. It's been killing people. And in fact, it pays taxes in Lincoln, which make the city run. So that means the city runs on blood money. And earlier today, particularly Senator Washington, you talked about kindness and compassion and empathy for others, except for the Palestinians, because that's what it looks like. Where has the compassion for those people been? Because what I've seen here today is a city council and a police, uh, system that actually doesn't save lives. What saves lives is regular folks in Lincoln, not you, and not the police. Regular folks who then call the police while they're doing the life-saving work. Are you doing life-saving work? Why are you not publicly telling people how to end this genocide if you know that it's going on? If you understand that people are dying? And all of you do, because all of you have eyes and you speak English, and you've been up here, and I've seen you speak English with other people and laugh and clap your hands, so it's, seems like your cognitive functions are going pretty well. So why not call for a ceasefire? Why not tell people, uh, how to contact their senators, what to say to their senators? Why not join the public pressure? Because like, y'all are the leadership of Lincoln, and you can't say that you can't do anything with zoning. Can't say you can't do anything, because we see you do it every week, every week. We've also seen the United States government do whatever it wants on Turtle Island forever, so you are now continuing that. And I also can't help but notice that, uh, you're all supporting a secondary genocide that's going on in Congo with your use of HP laptops for the Colton and the minerals that are found in there. People in Congo are dying for those children as well. Haven't seen anyone talk about the city divesting from those mineral-based genocides. Um, but yeah, kindness and compassion and empathy for others, except for the Palestinians. Instead, we send them bombs. Especially, did you, did you even know that there are Palestinian Lincolnites that are stuck in Gaza? Tom! Duden! You're train, possibly trained by the IOF. Are you aware that there are Lincoln Palestinians that were currently bombing, that are struggling to get out of Gaza? You deserve no respect. You are all a city council that could say something, could say something now. You individually could just say, like, totally agree with you, we, we should call for a ceasefire. Your mouthparts work. You're refusing to use them. Your fingers work, you're refusing to use them. You could join us, there have been many educational opportunities to join us, and you have blatantly refused. So where does this respect come from? Because there seems to be no respect for human life. Instead, we are shielding a business. The Board of Lincoln is shielding a business that kills people. That is the only thing that company does. It makes things to kill people. Is it hard to understand? Do you understand the words coming out of my mouth? That you are murderers? That you are contributing not just to the murder of Palestinians, but also to the murder of your own constituents? There are Lincolnites that we are bombing in Gaza, Lincolnites that we are bombing in Gaza with bombs that are made in Lincoln. Do you not see how that connection is particularly grotesque? We're like, hey, stop bombing Lincolnites. There has been no stopping. They have been there the whole time, and General Dynamics has continued to make bombs the whole time. And instead, don't shame a business that could be killing fellow Lincolnites. Don't, don't shame a business of folks who could be, you know, dead tomorrow. Today, they could be dead while we're talking. We don't know, and that's on y'all.
Sarah Man, 1450 C Street. I have a lot of things that I'd like to say today, but I think I'd like to start off with bringing the local, the global to the local. We often think as individuals that we don't have a lot of autonomy, that we don't have a lot of choice in the things that are happening around us. I do really appreciate, uh, the information brought up about toxic waste and, because right now we are facing an incredibly increasing global climate crisis. And you may be asking, what does that have to do with any of us? Has a lot to do with us. I'd like to bring up the Atlantic meridional overturning circulation. It is a system of ocean currents that circulate water within the Atlantic Ocean, bringing warm water north and cold water south. It has a tipping point beyond which it breaks down if this gets diluted by fresh water. Why would it be diluted by fresh water? From melting ice caps. Why would they be melting? Because we've been spending 50 years just pumping oil and extracting minerals and extracting, extracting, growing and growing without consideration about what that might be doing to impact the planet. A recent report by Renee Van Westen from Utrecht University confirms that it is at risk of collapsing as soon as next year. Sea levels in the Atlantic would rise by a meter in some regions, flooding many coastal cities, which we are already seeing. Brazil has had over 100,000 houses destroyed. There's flooding in Afghanistan, there's flooding in Haiti, there's flooding in Dubai and the United Arab Emirates. That is all happening within the last month. The wet and dry seasons in the Amazon would switch, pushing already weakened-wary forests past its tipping point. We would see much cooler degrees in Europe and much hotter towards the equator, and these things that are happening, they're happening very quickly. And you may be wondering, what does that have to do with anything? And I'd like to point out how much war is a pollutant. The Ukraine-Russian war has the carbon footprint of Belgium. They estimate that the first year of the Russian-Ukraine war was in the region of 120 milliatoons of CO2. That is approximately equivalent to the annual output of emissions from Belgium, which is equivalent to 2 million tons of CO2 in that period. The explosives, uh, excuse me, ammunitions and explosives alone counted for 2 million tons of CO2. That's almost a billion beef steaks, which Nebraska loves its beef, or 13 billion kilometers of driving. There are eight genocides happening in the world right now. Most of them are part of the global south, and the world is anti-black, so we do not care about the Pan-African diaspora. So many of these countries are suffering right now. And of course, we've been focusing on Palestine, because as we've mentioned, General Dynamics in Lincoln makes ammunitions for war. Even if we took Israel-Palestine out of the equation, why are we okay with funding war? I am not. As an individual taxpayer, I am incredibly uncomfortable with funding war anywhere. And the fact of the matter is, 15,000 children alone have died in the last year in Palestine. I'd like to show you this website. It's called CountingTheKids.org. It shows all the children killed in the Israeli-Palestinian conflict from 2000 until today. They're color-coded by flag, so you can see there have been Israeli children that have died in this conflict. I'm not saying that Israeli people have not lost their lives. But as you can see, as we're going through the years, innumerable amounts of Palestinian children, which children are the future. Scrolling, scrolling. As we know, the conflict in Palestine has been a 75-plus-year occupation of land that does not belong to the Israeli people. And keep scrolling, keep scrolling, keep scrolling, keep scrolling, keep scrolling, keep scrolling.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to? Is there anyone else who would like to approach and speak?
Hi. If I've ever been disrespectful to you, I am terribly sorry. Terribly sorry. I don't think I've been, but if I was, I apologize all over. My passion must have got the best of me.
Would you mind giving us your name?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rosina Peolini, 1850 Dakota. I'm coming with a solution. I don't know much about this occupation tax, but I'm thinking it might be good for Lincoln Parks and Rec, even a little bit of it. I don't know how we use this. I've kind of brought the idea of an 8% tax, state tax, but we know what our state budget's like right now. We better put that on hold for like, maybe next year, after November. But I don't know how we use that. So, I'm so glad I came and learned more about occupation tax. Woods Park, thank you for being there, folks. Like, you really showed up. I'm sorry I didn't see you, but personally, but I do know that you showed up, and I really appreciate it. I think it was a real lesson in how that documented stuff really matters, and I really thank the people who were steadfast in finding the facts. We're coming up with another one. It's the redevelopment of Van Dorn Project, uh, Van Dorn Park redevelopment project that's going to use some TIF money. We're hoping for a stoplight at 10th and High. I'd like you to help me be able to advocate for our community in a manner that we can bring the best options to Van Dorn Park. We know that there's a conservatory that's being proposed. It's a community park that would basically host 70,000 people, very similar, right, to the whole woods issue. So we have to decide probably early how we do outreach, how we avoid some of the issues that we had with woods, because we have stakeholders that are, you know, retired LPR, um, employees who have a great stake in this botanical gardens that might go into Van Dorn Park. A community park, not a regional park, not like set up for 70,000 people a day. So my question is, what's, we've done traffic studies, the numbers don't support a stoplight at 10th and High, but we've already had one fatality, two injuries. Does something like a walk audit help you, where we have the community come into that neighborhood with a very detail, I mean, it's a list that's done by Mark Fenton, who eats, lives, and breathes this stuff, right? Roberto Paritida knows how to, to do these walk audits. He did a beautiful one at Hartley. He's done a great one at, um, oh, help me, Elliot. That might help us understand what the real crash potential is, not traffic flow. How do we save human lives who need to get across 10th and High Street to get to Van Dorn Park? Because we've already lost one person. We have two who were very injured. We don't want to continue that. It's a 40 mile an hour, um, speed limit. I used to speed. They go 50 or more. It's a blind rise going north. It's a blind curve going south. So visibility is horrendous, and there are no sidewalks. Anyway, I'm, I'm feeding, I'm planting seeds for how we can approach this next project and not have, if nothing else, the expense of the last project, right? And I know the community outreach, even though it takes more time, the outcome will be awesome, because it'll be what the people want. I don't know if this is helpful. Please ask me questions, because then that helps me research and, and be able to better facilitate the process on my end. A citizen. A what, oh goodness. Um, hey, over there at, um, across from Claire McPhee, Benny, that apartment building's done, and they're starting to rent it. It'll, what, a year and a half? Two years. Anyway, thank you for the extra time. I am sorry, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alrighty.
Madam Chair, I move adjournment.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Madam Clerk. Yeah, go ahead. Dudin?
Baby Killer.
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Beckius?
Madam Clerk, I can't hear.
Yeah, just one moment. Madam Clerk, would you keep the roll call going so that we can hear? Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber? Weber?
Yes.
Washington? Yes. Session is adjourned.